Evening, everybody, and welcome to our committee as a whole meeting. We'll call us to order, and if you can take the roll.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Sure.
Councilmember Pointer.
Sure.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Sure.
Sure bringing Gray over the absence.
Yeah, they'll be absent tonight, so we'll just get right to it, so we can go do some other things tonight. Baumpark renovation project.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to stand up to the floor here.
Sure.
We'll talk about this, because the post, the post we were sitting back was significantly higher than we just created. Uh, Doug and I are looking at some different options. I'll talk, I'll talk first.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously came back higher than we were hoping. There are some potential ways to say toss if we go that route. The one thing that I always think about, too, is our shelters are, for the most part, fairly old. So, we haven't done, we haven't got, you know, Whitewater Park is new, and it ran, it was seventeen, sixteen, seventeen years old. Otherwise, every other shelter's been old, is on the older side. So, I feel like if, you know, if we're gonna do this, we kind of want to do it right. It's gonna last for a long time. Not to say we've got to double the budget or anything like that, but I'd hate to pare it down too much in an attempt to make it fit the number that we were expecting, but, you know, it does include restrooms as well. So, it's not just a shelter, it's really a big portion of it, as well as the restroom renovation, maybe those ADA compliant, and make it much nicer and larger, so there's kind of a two-phaser. Obviously, it gets called the shelter, but it's also restrooms as well.
Yeah, so part of the challenge is we could shrink the size of the shelter. Right now, the size of the shelter would be proposed with all eight picnic tables flying. We can shrink it down to six, but you start shrinking it down, our largest shelter, obviously, the Terrell Park Shelter, that's probably the number one shelter that's reserved all the time. And actually, Baumpark was the number two shelter when we had that for reservations. Part of that is just because it's a quiet neighborhood, it's a little bit more easier for people to get in and out of, and add nice playground equipment. So, if we shrink this down too much, it is the demand we need there for it, because you want to plan for the future.
How many does it currently hold? How many picnic tables can you?
Well, the old one that fell.
The old one had four underneath and four on the outside. So, it's kind of an odd setup where there was a bigger concrete pad than what was underneath the actual roof. So, I mean, we could fit six in there, it was tight, so we kind of moved some out to the concrete on the outside. I don't think six is necessarily a sacrifice that's too terrible, but anything shorter than that, or anything smaller than that, I think we
Oh, yeah.
we would be
Absolutely.
cutting our, cutting it a little too close.
Well, it might get more use if it had more.
Better families aren't quite, groups could use it about.
And it's right off the bike way, roadway, and it's just scats in the spot.
It doesn't get used very much because it's considered, kind of considered a hospital park. But that would be, that would be kind of what I would compare the size and style to a little bit more, other than the bathrooms are connected to the one, the one at Den. But it's a nicer, it's a nicer shelter, it's twenty, probably twenty-five years old, somewhere in that range, twenty-two, twenty-five years old. And then Seabird is very bare bones, doesn't get used very much. Central is also very bare bones and smaller, and doesn't get used for reservations. It gets used, but it doesn't get used for events or parties or anything like that, where Baum tended to a little bit more. We had Rhubarb back years ago before, because the park, you know, is shaded and nice and easy to get to and quiet, but it's, you know, it, there's, there's work to be done, especially with the restrooms and things there.
Some of the savings we could see is we eliminated the brick around the post, because we were proposing to have the brick match what the existing building is there, so it kind of ties in together. We eliminated that, we saved a couple thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, but I, I think the miss on our part for this was figuring out what the restroom costs are gonna be. The reality is that that's not cheap when you're messing with interior brick walls. We're gonna cut some concrete, more roofing ground, relocate where the doors are, but so they're not facing to the north. We got one through the east, one to the west, I believe. So, that was where we kind of made you, took what the cost would be.
And Josh is, Josh Denver's working on a different structure support system. He was using metal, welded metal, which makes it a little bit more specialized. So, he's kind of IDing some ideas that maybe we can get more people to bid and maybe cut a few of the costs without sacrificing the size and aesthetics of it, yes.
Are you thinking more of a wooden structure then?
Well, it, so it would be, it would be a steel roof, and it would, as it was currently, or previously bid, it was, it was, it was steel beams with a wooden roof, and so he's looking into doing more of a truss-style system of the shelter.
The initial roofing structure, the way it was set up, also helped minimize the number of birds that could roost in there. And that's one of the things, we go to a raptor style, you have all those nooks and cranks where birds can nest in there, causes other issues. And then you also have kids that like to climb and at least sit up, hang out in their raptors. So, that was part of the aesthetics, one that looks cooler, but it also minimizes the number of locations where birds and bats can roost.
Go into Shram, and you'll see where the birds like, like that area. They, there's a, there's a pretty good population of birds out there that like to leave presents on the tables, which then makes it a pain for
Yeah.
anybody who wants to do that stuff.
Yeah.
And so, that's part of the challenge, we have, we want to get our costs down, we understand that, but at the same time, we don't want to diminish the functionality of what we're looking at.
I don't know, maybe it's a silly question, but was it the cost of the bathrooms, because you had to do so many things? I mean, would have been easier to just put up a whole different bathroom and thing and not? Sometimes it costs more to do something
I don't think so, because the, the infrastructure's in that, that wellhouse, so I think it's, I think it's definitely cheaper to keep it in there and just expand.
Yeah.
But, but again, it does add to the cost, because the shelter that we're replacing was pretty bare bones. And so, we didn't get a lot for insurance, because it wasn't valued a lot. But, again, to invest in that part, which is a wonderful part in Grand Amity, and make it better, so that we come back and revisit the scale of our budget and say, can we support something a little bit more, and we're first to accomplish what we really want to get to? Or is this just something that, that's the end of it? We've got some other items from that part we want to talk about. You were talking about the arches.
So, the arches, before we go to the arches, real quick. So, I know, like, in the arches, you got Westover High School kids, they're gonna be putting that in there. Do they have, does Westover have an ancillary class?
No, please, no.
Actually, they, they
SMI comes up on that, I think it's one of their career exploration classes, and they actually look at ancillary. The reason I bring that up is that, around the pillars with the, with the brick
That would be something maybe they could
that they can do, once the structure's up, let the kids
It's aesthetic only, it's not structural.
Right, and I don't know if that'll help us got to build, you know, the bid down, and then still be able to build what we, what we have in front of us now, where we don't have to
And maybe they won't analyze it then.
Well.
Yeah.
At least they have that class.
Yeah. They'll look over a little sense of ownership.
Yes, exactly.
Funny how that works.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, just that, anytime we could use the school to help the kids learn something, another craft, or some, something like that, I wonder how many times we can do that, and this and that stuff.
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly what they have or how it fits in, because it feels like it's a little tricky, but they're usually pretty easy to work with as long as it fits into their curriculum and their schedule.
Well, then, yeah, obviously, the kids that got it during Christmas time, they're coming out here to do a brick.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yep, and so, on that end, with the arches, so it's a, it's a master gardener project led by a couple of master gardeners, and we, we've been in talks with XL Trailers, they're, XL Trailers is gonna donate all the steel. So, currently, would be three steel arches that would go over the trail, that would have hanging flower baskets down below. You guys probably see the pictures of what we're mimicking. So, the steel would be donated, the Mr. Harms' welding class would, would take care of the fabrication or the fitting, the sizes. Street department would, would set up the two and, and set the, the top one on top, on top, and the master gardeners would take care of the flower aspect of it throughout the year. And ideally, what we'd like to do would be run water and electrical to it, so in the winter, there could be lights where, when there's no, when there's no growth, and there could be an automatic watering system, which is what the picture you guys have, have. So, that way, it cuts down on labor, we don't have to set up something to go on water all the time. We could just turn it up and sell their hose through there, so it, it's constantly watered. So, really, it doesn't, it's not gonna cost us a whole lot, other than some man-hours, and I think it would make a really, really nice addition to that park.
It's very pretty.
I mean, looking down, down the road, you could see the entire park potentially being lined with arches eventually. Again, one step at a time, but would make for a nice, nice pathway.
Or any concerns or questions on the arches?
I've seen these.
Yeah.
Same to first, yeah.
It's fantastic. I mean, the one that, that this picture came from, there's probably twenty of the arches, and it is just mind-blowing walk-through type of, because you just walk them. And, and they had it all done because it was a garden where they were trying to show off their flowers. So, one was in yellow, and one was in white, and one was in pink, and one was in red, and, I mean, it was absolutely beautiful. And you just kept walking to see the next color and see, you know, what was going on. But very cool, and I think Baum is the perfect place for it, because of the way that the path meanders. And that's exactly what you need for something like this, is that meandering path. I think it's a perfect idea.
We, we kind of had the, you know, we make sure the concept isn't set off far enough that it's not gonna disrupt snow roll. It's not gonna, it's gonna be easy, low maintenance, as far as mowing around, so it'd be concreted around each of the pillars and
And it has to have the water to it. If you can't do the water, forget it.
Yeah.
Because they're not gonna last.
It would be
Because they are gonna be high, and they're gonna, because you're gonna have to have them high enough to keep kids out of them, you know? And it just won't work unless there's some water, so.
I keep in mind that, because it's not just pedestrian, big old bicycles.
On bicycles, too, yeah.
So, you're not
Yeah, and our, our trucks, and our, our plows, and, you know, everything that drives through there, snow removal and so on, garbage removal.
Question, how tall are the arches underneath?
Maybe twelve feet.
Oh.
So, it'll be twelve feet, and then there would be, the flower basket would hang below it. The steel beams would be sixteen feet, so they'd go four feet in the ground, stand up twelve foot across, and then the, we, we don't have the exact design of the flower basket or holder that it would be, but it would, you know, maybe be a foot below, maybe sixteen inches.
Okay. I certainly want to get that.
Yes, yeah, and that was something we definitely thought, you know, you, you see a lot less things get hung on or jumped up and ground. So, that's one of the things, we'll make sure, is that one, it would be sturdy enough, and two, it would be high enough that only the real, the extreme jumpers could get up there.
And they made it once they're still good there.
Yes, unfortunately, it's possible, yes, we want to make sure that they would be good and solid as well.
Yeah.
So, when will Denver have his new proposal to us?
Of course, soon.
Soon, okay.
I think the arches are gonna be amazing. I mean, I mean, if you just take a step back for just a split second, don't even think about wanting the one second, just the idea itself is just unimpressed. It's amazing, it's gonna make everything look so much better up there.
Yeah, definitely, we're, we're meeting tomorrow night, actually, out at XL Trailers, to try to get the donation steel details ironed out and figure out how and when we can give them to the school and have them start working on it.
Yeah, it's amazing, we got an employer down, who wants to donate stuff to the parks, too, so I'm sure, that's great.
Any other questions for them, so I guess that's a, go ahead.
Okay, you want to do the clock while I'm up here?
Are we getting the
I thought it
We got the parking, which transitions to the Anderson Street, so.
Okay.
So
So, sit down, Kristen.
I want to stand.
So, this, this does transition into the next agenda, I am watching Anderson Park, or Anderson Street. But part of that is discussion, we talked earlier about potentially adding parking at Baumpark. Do we want to look at doing off-street parking with the off-street parking lot, or do you want to look at doing angle parking? And Sam, you want to step up and talk about what you need to do?
So, and if you want hard copies, I got a couple, um, Jason and Doug, if you guys can share.
Back in the shack. Yeah.
I think that was angle one, and that's again, to the, that's the
I hate angle parking when I'm parking beside a huge truck, because I can't see any suit.
I get it, thankfully, cars are kind of cameras in the back.
I know, but still, you can't see around the side.
So, yeah, angle parking. Right?
No offense to your big trucks.
A few comments, say, and others, a few comments in the, in the packet, and I sent that stuff to Tim and Aaron. So, I mean, there's kind of positive negatives obviously to each. So, with the angle parking, they believe there's only two of the smaller trees, and I know I talked to Doug a little bit. He got some little smaller ones that probably will be relocated, and they're in the angle parking area, they're kind of with a darker hat, which is the proposed sub-six-foot wide sidewalk, but there's two trees that fall within there. There's one you can kind of see a little bit further to the north. Think we'll be able to get by that one without needing to remove it or relocate it, but it's something we can kind of discuss further down the road, too, if they're relocating to, they just want to move that other one, just to get it kind of out of the way, to get a little more clearance. And with, I kind of go back and forth with each item. At the parking lot, there is one larger tree out there that would need to be removed, so that's why there's that clearing and grabbing item toward the top of that cost estimate for that one. And then there would be three smaller trees that would all need to be relocated as well, so two small trees versus three small trees and a larger one. So, I mean, that's where there's a little bit to the cost-saving of the angle parking versus the parking lot. With the parking lot, obviously, it's taking up more of a larger footprint, more grain space, more grass. And then there will be, I think, metrics, I think they had two driveways, I mean, it kind of sticks one way, half a dozen, half a dozen the other. If you do two driveways, one on each end, you can kind of get rid of the turnaround areas on each side, so there's a little bump outs on the parking lot just to have a little room, so if somebody pulls in, they got room to kind of back out and then pull ahead.
Forward.
Yep, so instead of one twenty-two-foot wide driveway, maybe you can buy it with a ten or a twelve-foot wide driveway on the ground, but it doesn't change things a whole lot, as far as the footprint. The parking lot does offer, I believe it ends up being another four extra stalls. So, currently, just looking roughly along the east side of that, east side of Anderson Street, from where there's a current driveway that kind of goes into the trail, which, eliminating that project, right now, there's roughly eleven parallel stalls using a width of about twenty-three feet. So, roughly, currently, about eleven parallel. If we go to angle parking, there would be five parallel spaces that can still be used, utilized on the east side, and then there'd be nine angle stalls and one handicap-accessible angle parking stall. So, there would be total of fourteen versus eleven today, there'd be fourteen regular stalls and then plus one handicap. Where if you go with the parking lot option, there'd be a total of eighteen, eighteen versus fourteen, so you're, you'd pick up four other, four additional regular stalls, and then one handicap-accessible stall. So, we have a difference in cost, and, and yes, in engineering, we have, so fifty percent construction contingency. Engineering is just estimated, depending on what route the city wants to go, the council wants to go, kind of go back, put together an additional school services for this work, and then present that to the council, so you're not approving in any many means with what's being done here, it's just kind of direction of which way does the council want to lean towards. But parking lot, seventy thou, roughly seventy thousand, five hundred dollars total, additional cost, and then the angle parking would be just under forty-three thousand. So, difference of about twenty-seven thousand dollars between the two.
Using the parking lot, using the parking lot, though, isn't going to disrupt from any of the amenities that are really there right now. I mean, any, how much, you aren't really taking anything.
It's gonna be closer to the shelter and playground.
And no matter what option we go with, well, you know, we can talk to Doug a little bit to see, okay, you know, right now, there's currently, I'll call it courtesy walk, that goes between the trail and fire hydrant. So, whether we just kind of keep things, we're gonna tie into that again, just utilize that as access, or, you know, if they want an additional access, for instance, if you go with the parking lot, and you've got a short walkway that goes to the parking lot, where that new shelter's gonna be. And then similarly, same thing with the angle parking right now. Sidewalk would be six foot wide at the back of curb, it would kind of bump out and around, so anybody walking down the sidewalk didn't come down the trail, and then once they get high at Baumpark Trail, they go down five foot, but then when we wrap back a curb, it'll get just six foot, just to add a little bit of width for vehicles that hang over. And then you kind of jog out and around, and then there will be a lower ramp for that one handicap-accessible stall. But then again, off of that six-foot sidewalk, if, you know, city would want to add a sidewalk from there, directly to the shelter, so people parking on the north side of the angle parking don't get to walk all the way down, they use the existing courtesy, but didn't include any of that in there right now. But it's something like, I mean, that could be done and added. Yeah, both of them, kind of free parking area, six-inch thick concrete. Again, what the street will do, basically, look at the full six-inch thick concrete and then an asphalt alternate, but similar to all the other residential driveways, basically, six-inch thick concrete will work, well, anything going with. The parking lot option would just be a pad similar to what's over by Style Street, so no curb and gutter added per se, and the sidewalk would run up parallel to the street like it normally would with four foot wide four foot of green space between curb and sidewalk, and we just run through, and then you have a driveway. Angle parking, it'd be very, very similar to what's on Sherman, so we'll have, it'll almost be a double curb, so it'll be like an inch and a half drive over curb, roll over curb, to get up into the angle parking, and then a full curb at the front of that parking lot, parking area. Jason, Doug, Tim, anything I'm missing, or you guys want to touch on?
No, just because of the time of the Anderson Street reconstruction, this is the time for us to make that conversation, decide you want to add this in now, or just forget about it. Those are the thoughts.
I personally, I mean, I'm not the voting person here, but I personally like parking lot idea better, just because if you do make this happen, I think you're gonna get more activity over at that park, potentially, and they might have more activities at that park. And if you got lots of cars coming and going, and you're trying to back out into traffic, I just, I don't, don't like angle parking, personally, because we bless ourselves over here all the time trying to pull out, so.
Yeah, I mean, as a guy that lives on a road that has no stop sign to stop anybody coming down it, I know that, you know, Anderson Street's probably a drag strip, it's like mine is.
It will be, it's too rough.
Once it's cleaned up.
Yeah, but once it's not rough, it will be faster, that's what happened to South Borough.
So, back in the seventies, or whenever that was last, a good growing, it was a drag strip, I'm sure. The chief living at the end of the road back then probably didn't help nobody either, but
Yeah.
just for that reason, just that's how fast it's going, I, I don't like the angle parking idea, people backing off, there's people not paying attention. I, I think parking lot's a better option, personally.
And I disagree, because I think the parking lot's gonna take a lot of green space
Yeah.
to park, and it is so close to the building
Right.
that an accident could happen, so it's like this control running right into the ground, this is a wet one buffer.
Well, that's the other thing, I, I don't know
Yeah.
if taking that much green space is worth parking.
I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of effort.
I definitely think we can do something with parking there.
Yeah, I agree, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think Ryan got a comment, and I don't know, I don't know if people do this, but he said, you know, they play a ball in that area between like the playground and the shelter. You know, I don't know, other people do that, or just they say it's getting into some of that green space area, but
Right.
It's also quite a bit on the east side of that, I'll bet, that runs through there, too.
Right.
Or by the other parking area, but, and so, that's where it's, there's, you go either way with it, you know, cost, green space, trees, you know, what have, you have different ways to look at things.
There'd be an opportunity to make that parking lot bigger by the Veterans Memorial. Do you know what I'm talking, where this shelter previously?
So far away from the shelter, though.
Now, it's true.
Trying to be clever.
Yeah.
That's true.
There's a nice
But you're
that, that one.
I, I agree with Linda, that I would rather have the diagonal parking, only because we aren't gonna have people park there all the time. This is a situation where people are gonna go in there, they're gonna have a picnic, or they're gonna play, or, you know, whatever, but I don't see us having eighteen cars there, very often, and so, I really hate, just me, I really hate to lose the space, because a lot of Baumpark is wet.
It is, wow.
And if you take your kids there and play, and you're expecting to play football, or play basketball, or play baseball, or whatever, and it's raining within the last two days, you're gonna be in wet area, unless you're in that area that we're talking about taking for parking by. So, to me, it's more important that we have the space for the kids to play, and so, I would put it on angle. Do I like angle parking? No, because I always park next to Sam, ants around him. He's on one side, Jason's on the other side, I can't see him, but but the nice thing is, most new cars now at least have a backup camera, so you can see round things and so on and so forth. Everybody doesn't, I understand that, but I think that it's more common now. I hate to use eighteen spaces, when I don't think we're gonna have that many times, we're gonna need
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, we're talking about cutting the building down to hold six tables. Okay, you put six people at each of six tables, that's only thirty-six people. That means two people drove in each car.
There's still street parking, too.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
See, like, and I, I have a different point, not parking next to the big truck, but being the big truck trying to park, I'd rather angle park than try to pull into a small parking lot.
Exactly, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. What did you say, Chad? You were saying something?
I was saying that the parking lot that we currently have at that park is a very
Yeah.
but no more, yeah, I mean, and when I look at this footprint, that's the first thing my mind goes to, is clearly have a parking lot like this, that's general, it's, yeah, it's not friendly.
It, it should have been actually a little bit bigger, but we only had X amount of hours with the peanut house, so, yeah, and it's not used, right, but, yeah.
Well, it doesn't get you.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't get used heavily at one time. We don't have ten, ten cars or six cars, or one or two, which is nice, because otherwise, it's hard to get in and out of there.
But what you, I'm sorry. I was wondering if we'd restrict parking on the other side of the street, then, since we're gonna have the angle. Is the street gonna be the white?
This isn't, it's angle parking, so you have to back out to the north town.
And, and cross the street from there anyways, all the condos, so
Lots of driveways.
It's just gonna be people that live there, probably.
The only thing I would ask, I guess, is that we have two places where people can get from the parking lot up into the park itself, instead of just one beside the handicap, I would like to see a second spot, because so many of the people that are going to be going there are gonna be dragging a cooler, or they're going to be pushing a baby stroller, or, you know, or something like
Or sometimes there's more handicapped people than this parking spot.
Right, so I would like to see two areas where it could, they can get up, maybe one at each end, I don't know how to do it.
Maybe you could do one on the far north and make that up.
Yeah, we could add a, cut it, so the other, I see what you're saying, I mean, we could definitely add one on the far north end. If we add one somewhere else midway, it's just basically, then you have a spot where there's, it picks up where you can't park.
Yeah.
I'd say, and if you had on both ends, you have a bulk then.
Both ends, would that, would it add?
I don't know if we, just think about it, if we would instead of, say, a bulk curb, do we do, you know, we put a two-and-a-half inch or a three-inch lip curb instead?
No, because people will drive
Let me up on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and
Doug gets his big butters on his truck, you don't even notice it.
I just have, I just have concerns about people getting up there easily
I agree with that.
with equipment, you know, with stuff that they
Or strollers.
Strollers.
The last four stalls would maybe use the door opening, because somebody could come straight in.
Right, yeah.
Usually, they take the path the least resistant.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we can do some more concepts afterwards, but yeah, figuring, that's the reason we had this conversation, though, is what's more important, and how we set things up. And so, there's a lot of the points here about, I mean, we're actually gonna be in there, how often is it we're gonna use? But the idea of maybe the angle parking is the better, so we save some green space, we don't lose many trees. Uh, but the idea of maybe the angle parking is the better, so save some green space, we don't lose many trees. Um, maybe the number of people that would might use it, it's okay for us to be crowded once in a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, and, and it's nice when it looks like it's really used and busy and, you know, and there are other options, I mean. They can park on the street, they can go to the other end of the park, yeah, park around the corner.
Yeah, and I guess I didn't realize that it was that when we're at bomb park. After the rain, I guess I've never been there, because I've.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, other. Flash around sometimes.
Other than when it's like a heavy rain, but.
No, it's pretty.
So, what, what I'm hearing is we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit on the angle parking and try to get some sidewalks designs, because again. Be mindful, stand big or take bad place resistance, unless they are pulling a stroller, or pulling a wagon or whatever. They're gonna cut across the grass, but we'll want to identify the best routes to go.
Is there any way to get too many cap parking up there?
No.
No?
Well, I'm gonna say no because. Everybody can park in a parking place.
Right.
But if you have two handicap parking places, now you're taking it away from everybody except the end up.
Yeah.
I think the one is fine.
There's certain number of stalls.
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking not to, not to take a stab at the demographic in Manchester, but we are on the older side, so just thinking that there's probably.
But those aren't the people that are gonna be going very far, you know, you're, you're gonna talk more families, more people that are able to get a home place. If you're a handicap, the chances are good you're not going to the park.
If you are, someone will drop the awesome place.
Or you're gonna have a bunch of grandkids that are gonna help you out.
Mm-hmm, right.
Or anything like our families.
Show the PCI sometime with your husband, we have a handicap, because my husband's feet are stuck, and. Everybody's a handicap there, and it's not enough, so it is what it is, but. Yeah, there's a lot of people who don't do this, so, okay.
Sam, do you have a direction?
Yep, yep, we'll get kind of, kind of another curb cut for now, maybe I'll talk a little bit more, Doug and Jason, and see if they want to throw another sidewalk in maybe from the. Do you want to throw a sidewalk in from the north side to the shelter?
Well, let's look at that concept, with the sidewalk, I think we use our collection sales tax dollars, so that would be a couple.
Right.
Um, so we'll take a look at, uh, at doing that.
Yeah.
Conversation.
Yes, I agree.
I agree, I, I totally spaced off the, the wet and the green space, I just didn't.
My biggest concern is taking more landscape away from the park, because it is a smaller.
Are you saying we're gonna go back for Monday night, or?
No, next to you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any updates on Anderson Street?
Yeah.
Cause you were talking about the extension down Butler, actually, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the next thing, had an estimate on there for an extension to go further west down Butler Street. So, this came up. Last made a hole, existing water main. Chad jumping up, I'm saying something wrong, the west side of Butler Street, so what we're tying in, it might be under the existing storm sewer. So we can have a pot of luck to confirm, but I know Jason and Chad were saying that they had to replace and leave the service line to the property on that corner of that condo. And they had to remove one of the storm sewer pipes to get at it, um, so then kind of a discussion, it's like, okay. Do we keep going with the water main further down the street and just get under, under the culverts, or make a bend across Butler? So we can extend the entire project further west, um, so what option, you know, we just take only the water main further west, or? We take the entire full reconstruction of the street sidewalk and everything and just keep going after, keep going further.
It's hard to understand, so here's Anderson, we'll call this Lauren, okay, and. West, the, basically the water main currently just does this. We have those two big culverts that come out of bomb park, they come across like this. And then they cross back across the street like this, and then they go to that pole ditch. At an angle like that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're talking about the connection point. For this, this water main that's hidden that direction, I've got a water main right, right here. The water main is underneath these two big culverts.
Ah.
What we're discussing is, do we take the water main further, then, because like, right now the project stops here. Okay, but to make the connection with our new water main back to the old water main, we like to do that right outside of where we stopped the construction, so next time. Was, whenever Butler Street, which is probably not in the next twenty years, um, when that gets done, then we can grab that and go. Right, so to make this connection, now we gotta take these two big, two forty-two inch culverts out, make the connection, and then put them back in. Or do we extend it further past, go underneath the two coming across here? And then come back and tie it in here, so that we, we avoid this. So in the future, if we ever go again on that water main, you just connect here and go, you don't have to worry about none of the. Stormy issues. How much further out do you have to go?
Yeah.
You have that?
Hundred and twenty feet roughly. It takes from roughly where we stopped, it's about another hundred and twenty feet further beyond when we.
So this is like that. I was hoping you were gonna say something like forty.
We're, I mean, for probably about a hundred feet or so, eighty feet shy of the culverts where we're at today, so we're basically getting this. Beyond the culverts and then another, you know, make sure we get beyond far enough, we're not gonna get back near on next phase. I think it stopped before the next set of driveways, so. There's enough distance between the culvert crossing and the next driveway, where we don't have to get in the next driveway, but, that's. Do we just do water main, and I know there's kind of some stuff going off the sanitary sewer, and you take the sanitary sewer, and then do you extend the entire project? Or do you only look at doing the north half of the street with the water main, so I think it's far enough away, I don't think the sidewalk. The council only wanna do just the water main, you could do that, um.
Would this be phase one or phase two?
This is phase one.
Phase one, okay.
Part of the challenge is again, the two forty-two inch, uh, culvert there, you would already take them out once, because we have that water main leak. Um, right winter, it was froze out there, but we put the pipe back in, and so you've already rolled the collars on those. So that you could put them in, because they have a little safe.
Yeah, we put collars around.
Yeah.
So we, there's already a repair in.
Right.
Um, the repair though, is outside of the scope of this plan also, so now we'd have two repair spots on that.
This really is a council question as to how you, you wanna pursue this, but there is an additional cost in this, and that's the concern.
A hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Uh, potential.
Potentially.
That, that seems. So it's actually bit out. Um, if anything, you may want to put this as an alternate. To see where our bids come in at, and. And, and if we have the capacity to add this, this would be a wise choice to add. If we don't, then we don't add it, because we're gonna tear into it. These Butler Street is not on the radar, for us to redo anytime soon, so we're, if it's twenty years. I mean, that connection's already twenty years old, so what? Benefit do we necessarily see at that point, because again, we're gonna be tearing things out for the sanitary sewer if we don't do sanitary sewer at that time. So, to me, it's. It's play it safe, we do it now. But, it's, what, what's your risk, and so, is this insurance policy, or is it something that you're willing to roll the dice and see what happens?
The initial conversation between Sam and I started, because when we're, when we're looking, when, when they give us the plans and started, we started discussing them heavily. It was, would it be cheaper to extend it, rather than the contractor have to remove the?
Exactly.
So that's what sparked the conversation.
Absolutely, yeah.
See which way would make better nickels and pence sense, so, that's what sparked the conversation on what should we do here? Because those could be culverts or.
And the new water main alignment will be for sure, make sure we get it. Roughly, four or five feet from back of curb, so it's, I mean, it'll be on the street, it's just making that jog over, not tie in. Um, this, where, issue wise, so next, you know, next phase, they took on in the street. And it would be a non-issue, but. And if we take everything, no, it's obviously it's still the crops underneath the water main, and when they go down Butler next time, which we would try to get them all the way through that with this. If it's extended further.
How far beyond that open culvert would that go, I'm just trying to picture how far.
I wanna say it's like twenty inch feet, give or take, so it's. Lucky to get, you know, a good fifteen, twenty feet beyond that, so with sewer and the water. Um, if we go that route, so next phase, when they go to hook back on, they're not trying to undermine the storm sewer. And make sure we get plenty far out there to make sure that they get a easy spot to connect on, it'll still be wet. Um, at least they shouldn't have to worry about trying to get back in here, those culverts again. And that's.
And you said it's an asphalt street there.
Yeah.
And the estimate is. Uh, pavement basically all going back as six inch concrete, um, gonna have a little cost savings if maybe you want asphalt there from Butler. At a hundred and twenty feet, but, um, you know, it's. I don't see if one of the paving on this.
If we had to do that, would you have to mess with the curb?
So, if, if you only do the wall, um, we could get the water main replaced in the sewer by only taking the north curb and leaving the south curb. Then we could get the water in the sewer done without touching sidewalks either, and we could try to minimize it.
The reason I ask that is because we're gonna be looking at. That property that's on that, uh, corner of Anderson and Butler, on that north side. Which, if we did that, you had lost the curb, I would be basing it, are we gonna double name that one, that one person, that would be.
The corner street.
That one, so I get it, I live on a corner, and also part of the game, we buy one, but. We were talking about Anderson, not Butler, and now we're gonna start throwing this in, and that's adding additional assessment to that property potentially.
Yeah, and with or not, so right now the way we'll set it up is wherever we stop. The concrete, or if they get into, which we don't get into their water sewer service, but that'll be, you know, a very small portion, a little bit of sidewalk. We will obviously do the transition panel, but then there are sets for that, those four, two, three, four, five panels, whatever we do, and then just whatever length of curb that we know is permanent. And not gonna be ripped up next project, so that's the extent of what we'd assess them for going down Butler. And kind of each side street is how it's, how we've done that. Um, so there, yeah, so it would be extending their assessment a lot further, if the council wanna assess them, you know, for all that additional. And that's where too, it's, okay, so you take the curb out, it's for the water main, city replaced that at their cost, or they only assess them for that curb, and. That's it, and, well, you know.
Yeah, there's the, an animal that tackle on itself right there, just.
Because it'll be for sure their water and sewer service will be on that one, and I believe the next project to the west, but I don't know for sure. We didn't, so right now, or, you know, we didn't go that far, we didn't look at things that closely, that part of the west. To know for sure where their water service is.
And you gotta go all the way to the, the, to the dry run, right? Um, to tap into it?
They wanna get past.
To the west. So there'd be one driveway on the north side and one driveway on the south side that they're gonna come through on.
Yeah, rich right now, right now, the way things sit, we're not looking to get into any driveways on west, going west on Butler, west of Anderson.
Right.
We'd pretty much be going to end the radius, plus maybe, you know, another fifteen, twenty feet, you know, number be the, you know, you had your asphalt transition area.
Chances are, if you ever do anything out of Butler in the near future, it's gonna be a no one hole related to the curb, they're pretty decent. Right, so. What, as far as city employee wise, do you guys work on this stuff all the time, and this repair, I mean, is it gonna last another twenty years, you think, or? Or, I mean, I'm kind of leaning on you guys for a little guidance here, where, where you think makes sense, logical sense here, I mean. I mean, our patch, Jason's been in that tube a couple of times, a little smaller than I am. And say it was good on the inside, I was actually shocked how good it looked, to be honest with you, because we did, uh, freezing cold, and.
How many times in the last, you've been here how many years, you've done it how many times? Once, okay.
And, and, if I tell you I would roll the dice, it's gonna break tomorrow. That's how this works. That's how this works, but, yeah. So like, like I said, the whole reason this conversation started was to maybe try to avoid the forty-two inch culverts.
Right.
Um, well, they're made good financial sense to, to move it down a little bit and tie in, and be done with it. What's the, the conversation?
Would it just be one pipe, or did you guys take two?
I think so.
And it's just one stick on each one, just a line, but stick basically we've done sixty-one. It's gonna play new storms, which will have some new stuff to expand, I'm actually just looking at it, asking maybe three hundred dollars. Or a little more, because it's a little more mean. Um, with that patch, it's probably gonna be more, but.
One good bright side to look at it is that we did somehow make this happen. That's all gonna be brand new, across Anderson and then into the dry run, I mean, we're not gonna. That'd be a long time for it to touch again, right, hopefully? About you, Jason?
Three times, but it's by the time you're ready to do it, then two, but.
Uh, again, it's. It's a cost of, where do you start, where do you stop, like doing house, any other project?
I like the idea that you said, though, let's have this on our radar.
Yeah.
And you could.
Like, like, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I, I think that, yeah, we know that's a potential option, depending on what the bids come in.
Because, again, our project cross, we're wrapped, we're tight.
And we can just keep adding and adding. But we can't, so, yeah, let's.
To get to answer that question about how our street is in the assessments. Just what you're just talking about.
Oh, with email license?
Yeah.
True.
Um, I guess the only thing I would need from that, so if we wanna do it as an alternate. Is would you look at only doing the water and sewer, and ripping up the north curb? And if so, I mean, it kind of depends on what, what we'll have to do additional, I mean, what we show, kind of get sewer and water main shown further out, if that's what you wanna do. And then get additional survey work, but depending on what route you wanna go. Do we need survey, you know, we need to get back beyond sidewalks, are we gonna do sidewalks, or can we basically just stop?
What we need to do.
Just.
What you have to do. Yeah. Just what you do.
I, I'd like to support my staff on this, and I trust her than you're saying.
I do too.
It's the dollars that make me a little more nervous. Um, because again, the scheduling on our CIP, which we're gonna start soon again for upcoming years. Is it necessary, um, or are we? I'd love to be able to spend this money, so, but that cost, uh, how is that getting it back to the next project?
Right, yeah.
And it's, I mean, sidewalks through there, I don't think sidewalks themselves aren't in terrible state, I don't know, even looking at.
Down on the north side, but all pretty much been replaced.
Yeah. So I mean, the sidewalks, it's not like the sidewalks need to be replaced because they're in very poor condition, they're not, it's just.
Right.
Um, so I mean, in fact, I think the person on the floor that Joe was talking about just read it. Looks like everything on that north side all the way through there, it looks like fresh concrete.
Yeah.
Corridor beginning, right?
So I mean, definitely get by with just doing the curb, and then what we need in the street to do, to do water and sanitizing.
So I think we need, I think we need to do it as a separate.
Yeah.
Bid, and. Add on if we need to, or if we can.
And if something breaks between now and then, that might dictate something totally different.
Right.
Yes.
But it won't, Jason.
But then, back to what you were saying, as far as, if it's gonna be sanitary sewer and main and everything, or?
Yeah, if you just wanna do, only look at doing the water main, sanitary sewer main. And, oh, I guess then you get into services. Service, I don't know where, the service on the southwest corner. Remember the name of that property, they come out east to Anderson Street, so that's a non-issue, the one to the north of the condos was right there. But if we're ripping out the north curb, their water and sewer service could get replaced somewhere between curb and sidewalk. And that's just a matter of the next properties to the west.
Which is.
And, I think we went through that.
Should be.
We don't think we got stuck somewhere.
Yeah.
We get, we get stuck somewhere in that main, I think too, there's somewhere, there's a.
Cause we later ran down it, uh. Yeah, I just don't think we went back that far to catch.
We got the first one, the condos, we know where that, exactly. The, the next one to the west, we don't even exactly know where that'd be.
We need to get into this part of their new driveway, but we try to limit it, limit how much.
Right.
Been removed.
Okay. Do you got enough direction now, or not?
Yeah.
Kinda.
Do you want me to bring something back, I guess, once? Next week, holding in, or? This.
Well, let's look at the twenty second. Sometime twenty second, because we're near the point where we're, we're at. You're ready to have some conversations with the property owners, and we even know who to invite and who to involve. So we better have a conversation on twenty second.
Next, we haven't. We should, we're staying, yeah, we stay within curbs, and shouldn't need any temporary use, but it's, we'll be all within city right away too, so that will be fine. Yeah, I can kinda talk a little more maybe with Tim. But we can bring, we can kinda get kind of an additional scope of what we think it would take to at least get a little bit of sort of way, survey work, add a plan sheet or two, fit it as an alternate. And then, um, kinda go from there.
Clear as mud?
Yeah, that should work. So actually, I'll bring that back around.
We're gonna make tonight's meeting easy. Have difficult conversations.
Thank you for the grounds.
Yeah.
All right, there, Chad, it was nice. Yeah, they did, they might stay up there, this is our issue.
We've got an A plus in our class.
Really?
Uh, so one other item. Uh, talk a little bit with Jason, Jason, Tim, we're discussing. Um, started with kind of sump pumps. Jason's had some questions with some folks, north of Union Street, of the condos. Uh, that have sump pumps, they could tie them into the subgrain, so. A lot of times, there's storm sewer close by, if there is a sump pump, you can hide into that, um. Right now, way things currently sit, we're not looking to add any additional storm sewer, pretty much just replace what's there. Uh, right now, the ones that come to mind, know there's a sump pump that comes off the curb across from Fayette. Condos up to the north, north side of Union Street have sump pumps, which we're not getting that far this phase. But, um, you talked about adding another storm sewer in set of intakes north of Howard. So the subgrain, if we, if the council wants to tie sump pumps into the subgrain, it doesn't have to run so far before it gets to a set of intakes to get out loaded in the storm sewer. And also looking at upsizing the subgrain from a six inch to an eight inch to, so it can have a little more capacity, so when the sump pumps are running and. Soils are wet, that it's still doing its job.
Right.
Um.
We've been engineers for a little bit, you know, places where people have. And it causes ice damp so bad on the street that any chance that we can get to get it off the surface in the third time. It isn't, it's a good move on our part for, you know, hazards of people slipping and, you know, a lot of times they're at the ends of their drives and. So if we can get them tied into the, to the storm or into the subgrain, if we upsize.
And I don't think upside in the subgrain from the six to an eight inch, it's not gonna be a, you know, huge cost difference, but. We didn't have in the preliminary estimate was running an additional storm sewer pipe north of the little point by Ball Park. Going north to the north side of Howard. Um, so that'll be, you know, the additional two intakes and then storm sewer to get up to that point.
So roughly, what, how much of a difference? Just, I mean, if you were gonna.
Probably. Intakes are, you figure, four to five thousand, ten thousand dollars and same for intake, and I don't know the distance on.
It's about a hundred feet. That way we could bring the, the subgrain straight into that. Uh, straight into that swan, so we're down there then, from above, from the next phase. So.
Wow. It takes a ten minute, it's.
Sixteen.
Two thousand, twenty.
Twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Issue?
Okay.
Um.
Difference, I mean.
It being, in addition, yeah, so. I don't know.
I think you said forty, so.
Go back a little. I said only like we were just talking about, I mean, I know. And we'll say, I think they're kinda tight, I mean, that, and that's one. Would be, I mean, it would help, um, now when it rains, we know what, we've got pictures, Howard Street floods. Adding intakes on the north side, we probably just put singles, we're not gonna try to pick up, you know, a bunch of water, and when it's a big rain event, it's everything's still gonna flood like it is. You know, until something, you know, larger project kinda helps slow things down from coming into town. It's not gonna solve those issues to just cause those pipes, those forty two inch pipes in the dry run, I mean, it's just.
Might help keep it out of our basement some, a little bit. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know how much weather nature throws at us, but it's. Okay.
I think the big, the big issue here is getting it off the surface, that's our, well, the big problem with the ice jam. Cause they do run off, most of them run off there year round, they don't. Typically, they'll dry up in the winter time, so, but these up there.
They don't want to force them.
Yeah.
We didn't think that.
Storm sewer would probably run up the west side like it does today, and just kinda follow along curb and gutter, cross Howard, and then. Add a set of intakes on the north side of Howard. And then subgrains, all in the estimate, I'd say that wouldn't change a whole lot of a lot by the increase in the size from six to eight. And then. And there's nothing that I found, city code, anything about not hanging some pumps, the only thing is that it can't be tied into sanitary sewer. Um, but nothing in there that I found that it says anything about not hanging them in the subgrain. I mean, subgrain is, in essence, it is storm sewer.
What are your thoughts?
I think. It benefits us to preserve life of the street if we have the subdrains in there. It also provides, all the property owners too, if there's a sump pump, it's a wet area, as you know, notice. Um, to me, I think this is probably a project we need to look at in order for us to be able to extend it on to, to the future, face you.
Okay.
We can, um, get that added and. Add the, those two intakes in and just say upside of the subgrain, it won't be a huge change, some oversight, but. We'll definitely circle back around on the Butler Street extension and then get an updated exhibit for the parking.
You have any other good news for us tonight?
Keep me on.
Um, that was media com last week, they came, it was a good discussion, um. They kinda had a few questions and kinda where to put things. Um, they're looking to put, and they say we'll probably circle back around, maybe more of a discussion with staff, but. Since right away it's so tight, they're trying to get by without getting easements, so they're wondering if they could put pedestal between sidewalk and curb, there's only four foot of space. Um, I told them if they wanna do that, it would run it by a city, um, but what they would have to do is they'd have to leave them low, so they could pave the street, and then once the street and the sidewalks, and then they'd have to come back and then raise them up. I told them a few different times, I noted like, there's gonna be snow there, too, it's only four foot, so it's gonna get piled, it's gonna be a lot of snow. Um. So they would all be roughly a foot diameter of one, I think that would be a little bit larger, that would be like sixteen inches by sixteen inches, so. Some of those, you know, well, maybe six inches to a foot from sidewalk, and maybe only two feet from back of her, which isn't ideal, but.
How many of them would there be? I mean, is it only a couple, or is this?
Probably there was five along the east, and they would all be along the east side.
Okay.
I believe there was five, there was, there's gonna be one north of the condos. Across from Fayette, um, and there'll be a line that runs northwest and then east, I believe to get back to Manchester Science. There'll be another one. Believe by Perry Broman's house. For a drop, to give them service, and then another one on the north side of, uh, between his property and Corey Young, so there's the three. One of those being a little bit larger, that would need to be kinda sixteen inches by sixteen inches, and stand a little bit taller than a whole pedestal. And the other two are north of the park, in front of two properties up there. One is across, one being across Union Street. And then the next one, I think, one property north of the park, where there's a service drop that they would have to get across, so. If, and if staff, council doesn't wanna go that direction, they can say, well, you know, we're gonna get easements and. Their only comment on that was it might take time, but. You know, and I was very polite and courteous, and you know, said, um, we'll bounce it off and see if we can help them move things forward, but at the same time. And we did reach out to them, I think we sent our initial letter to utilities in March, um. You know, and we haven't had a whole lot of discussion until the last maybe month or so. You know, they're trying to get things figured out now, where it'd be nice to have this conversation in June, it would help go a little bit quicker, and like, you know, like, got out there, got easements and others, there's certain, you know, get work done. I think for the most part, where they would be, where the pedestal would be, at least between. Butler and Fayette, um, I know where two of them will be, Alliance has current. Transformed or pulled behind sidewalk, and then where they have paid easements, so. It would be in essence in the same locations, just media com would be in front of sidewalk, Alliance would be on the backside.
Are they burying go up there, Anderson?
Well, all the overhead lines will be removed. I think there'll be a few service poles behind the sidewalk, they'll have streetlights.
Right.
Um, but otherwise, Alliance boring everything, and actually Alliance of work. They're crossing at Butler, crossing at Fayette, and crossing at Howard, but they don't have a whole lot of, uh, main line going up north, south, Anderson, I think there's just one between. Short stretch between Fayette and Butler, and we, if you drive up there, you can see where they added a, kind of transformer box, and they added some equipment, um, up through there.
Usually the big fight of the citizens is getting them off of their poles. They're on Alliance poles now, media common.
Mm-hmm.
That's the big hang up, is like, these guys will get their stuff moved, but you have, no, media common, wind stream will still be hanging on their poles.
Mm-hmm.
So it's hard to get them to move forward with, get off of their poles, to get their folder.
Do we have anything in place that says it'll be done by X date, or we just take the pole down anyway, and you're out of luck?
Then we, we had the same Danny's man.
Try to note that in a letter, saying they gotta be done by X date, and. I think we've done it here once where, I mean, it kept getting pushed, and they weren't showing up, so we basically had a resolution, and council approved a resolution that. Stated that if there is any liquidated damage, that the contractor can't start their work due to this utility not being moved or relocated. That the utility would be charged, the liquidated damages.
Yeah, or we did a resolution or something.
I mean, Highway thirteen.
I think Ryan had to send a, a letter.
But usually gets it moving, and you never had, I mean, had to do that, thankfully, but. We have done that before, but yeah, years of we try to ask them, I think this one is, you know. Prior to January, I think is what it said in the letter, you know, that you basically get everything done before frost, but. Won't be surprised if there's stuff happening, you know, maybe poles getting yanked, but if I have media common, wind stream gets off of there, that Alliance to come back, you know, right before the project, maybe your poles.
And so. It's a tough, tough thing, cause if it slows it down on their side of Fayette, at the end of the day. I'm not sure that this is the best place for them, because it's so close to the street, it's so removable and all that stuff, that. If they get mowed off, you miss. Then it's another, it's usually another argument of who's paying for it.
It was in twenty twenty with the Highway thirteen. I was thinking it would be radical if it would then happen here.
Yeah, I can just let them know that, you know, city doesn't want them between that area, just because of the close proximity and issues, if it wouldn't get hit by a power bearing stolen, and someone loses service.
Yep.
I, and I know copula plans, I go on up through there, so that work done, like they're sitting tight, cause they don't wanna be in there now and have to move their stuff out of the way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they use a service mount. Pedestal, like, there's a, it's service mounted in the ground, they keep it here a little bit low, that way when we plow across it, it's not above, there's, you know, above the ground.
Yeah.
That's. It's a, yeah, it's a handful, basically, that's right.
I did pose that question to media com, but apparently they don't have anywhere they really use handles, apparently, it's all up ground pets, so they have to get different equipment, and I guess to work on them, so they didn't, when they go that out, because I told them too. So if you have a handle and it's flush mounted, and they said you could be pretty much up against the sidewalk, they're close to it, then not much of an issue, but. With the sidewalk, could be a little closer to the trail, still, I mean, except there'd be one, we'd have to be about six inches away, which is, a foot is about minimum, like to go typically, um.
Hmm.
I can settle that.
Yeah, cause if you get up with that. The handle, and they're right up against that curve or, say, a sidewalk, and it's gotta be busted out.
Oh, yeah.
What's the likelihood that you're busting that concrete out of there, not catching that under my own? It just doesn't seem like it's a very good spot for them. Unfortunately, like, they don't. Can they go to the other side of the road?
Uh, same scenario, I mean, both sides, it's literally four foot there between curb and sidewalk, which is the. And, I mean, and that was early discussions, we ended up, it's gonna be an issue just with utilities and everything, it's just, it's everything's narrow through there, and that's why the city's getting easement for. Sidewalk. Up through most of the corridor, so. No, I'll, um, kinda let them know where the city sits and hopefully they can get evens, I mean, it. I only talked to one property owner over there, and she didn't have any concerns, so. But, I don't, I don't think Alliance had any issues from what I understood from the few that they got, property owners. So usually, if, you know, sometimes if Alliance has issues, they'll try to reach out, see if we can assist in any way. But I think they got them all without too much of an issue, so. Hopefully, media com doesn't have any concerns, but, um, I will let them know.
Anything else, Sam?
That's all I have, unless there are any other questions for me. Thanks. Thanks, Tim.
All right, Whitewater Park clock donation, is this from a road? Yeah, I'm having that now, you're right.
Uh, so it is pretty simple, um, the, the Rory has purchased a clock, it's, it's. Uh, it'd be put in, um, the triangle shaped area with the, uh, grass area with the three metal artwork pieces, and so. Um, not a whole lot to discuss, other than that's where it's gonna go, and they've already purchased it, it's, um. Luke Arden's gonna put, um, put the utility, the electrical to it, uh, Walt Becker is, but Luke's got the, the foundation, the cast foundation there, and then. Put it up.
They're putting some kind of a thing around it.
There'll be a car.
Donation.
Concrete pad around it that has, um, donor plaques on it, for people that have donated, so. Pretty, pretty straightforward stuff.
So go let face the road then, so you can move that by, and so.
I believe it will face east, west, because that's the way that the sidewalk reference. And the sidewalk runs north, south, so you would see the clock base as you were walking past it. But I'm not, I guess I haven't gotten. I haven't really thought about that, cause the parking lot isn't there necessarily, it's off, the parking lot's further to the west.
Yeah.
So to me, it would make more sense to be able to have it face east and west, the clock base.
Thank you.
Looks like a nice clock.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you, Rory, for that. Okay, next signs in the right of way.
All right, so I had some questions brought up at the last council meeting regarding. Uh, real estate signs up there next to the open cemetery, and some concerns about that. I know we're starting to see more events and more, uh, real estate signs in the right of way. Our ordinance does prohibit these types of signs to be placed in the right of way. The question that's come up is because some who are for civic events, civic organizations, church events. How do you want the staff to handle this, because if we start pulling all the signs out of the right of way, you're gonna get phone calls. And we'll have a number of phone calls here. Is it something that you're going to write an exception for certain events is permissible, and how long are they allowed to be in the right of way? Like, let's face it, the lower county fair always puts up signs, this is a big event, they've got them in the right of way, they got directions to the fair, or the park. So that kind of is. Something we, we, we've just let them handle, cause it does help direct traffic, it helps, saw that, but it's not permissible on our ordinance. Uh, Saint Mary's has a fall festival, I see a lot of those signs out there right now, they're in the right of way. The Boy Scouts have something going on, they've got something in the right of way. The real estate signs, that's a commercial entity, I don't really have a problem pulling those signs. And the reality is the model's changing, the business model for, for really, science is changing, because everybody's online, people look online, they have the addresses. They know where they're going, they, they wanna look and see what houses are for sale, it's no longer driving past the street, you're not reading it in the newspaper to see where the addresses are and need help with signage. I think the real estate signs is really to promote their own business.
Well, it doesn't, our thing right now for real estate signs, just say that it's supposed to be in front of the premise?
That's correct.
Right.
Not in the right of way.
Not in the right of way, but in front of the premise.
In front of their premise.
The issue too is gonna be.
The issue too is gonna be if we do decide to let those civic signs, those St. Mary's and stuff in the right of way. Other people are gonna see those signs on the right of way and think, I can just go ahead and do it.
What did the state code say? Does it, the state code that originated for it, right?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know for sure. I know the state code is clear on, um. Election signs, you know, councils or whatever, nomination signs, but as far as. Other signs, I'm not sure. On state highway, they're not permissible, on the premise sign, they're not permissible on state highway. So. That, that's a clear no. I think cities are allowed to have some say in that.
So like on, on North Franklin, which is Highway thirteen, there shouldn't be signs?
There'd be any signs whatsoever up and down that road.
Yeah, but the state doesn't pull them, they pretty much rely.
And then Highway twenty, still can go old twenty considered a state highway?
No, but East, East Main Street is not. West Main is highway.
I agree with what Aaron's saying. If, if you let certain signs be there, then the assumption from everybody is, oh, that I can quote mine there too. And then you have the problem of. Whose do you leave and whose don't you and then it becomes a hassle of somebody's gotta be out there all the time. Pulling the ones that I just think we have better. Um, to me, I just don't think they should be getting it right. I think they should all be inside.
On private property.
On private property. I don't care what the sign is, if you're selling the house, it can be in front of the house and if you're. Trying to. I don't know, do something for the cancer society or whatever, you know, it's the same thing. It can still be up in front of the house, it doesn't have to be in the parking. I understand they're not as easy to see there, but. I just, I just think consistency is.
I hate signs.
Yeah, as long as they're not in the right of way.
We get calls from residents, could people put signs in their yard and like last time I home.
And I had, I had friends call me too and I just told them, no, you don't have to leave them at home.
See, I think what we need to do is to, to make the decision. And then give people a grace period. Where we explain things, we put it in the newspaper, we, we can talk about it. Cancer and, you know, all that kind of stuff and we put it on the water bill and how else you can talk to them about it. And then we just start pulling it and I would not move them, I would just pull them. If they're where they should not be, then they're gone.
And the residents that have them in there, so just pull them to, I mean, if they.
I don't care who put it there because you're not gonna stop. I'm, I'm saying you, Tim, because I'm assuming you're gonna get stuck with this job. Tim Hanks, I'm sorry, not Jason, hey, and Jason, okay, well, but I know that. That somebody has to deal with it somehow and so I'm just making an assumption here. But the point is, if it's where it should not be, then take it out. But don't take the time to get out of the truck and move it into somebody else's yard, I would say. But I think we need to give people a chance to understand that first, so I don't wanna do that tomorrow, sorry. I know you probably want to, but I, I think we need to give them some kind of a. Yeah, that's fine, so October first, sound.
On September eighth, we, we can have this as part of the council discussion. Because we, we just sent out the agenda, we're gonna make the agenda, we got time. So we'll, we'll just put it on the agenda for Monday, so.
I, I just think that's a better idea to give them a grace period, but then just pull them. If you see one, you quote. And if I see one, I have the right to pull it too then, as far as I'm concerned. If I'm walking, I walk.
I just, I just didn't like the idea of pulling these, but not please.
That's what I think. You just pull them all and.
So do you do one Manchester related, one about farmers market, where they take a coffee and. It's not something, but it's, it is though.
I agree. Okay, the other question to me then is, do we allow them on city property? Because I think that's something we have to consider because.
And that's an issue right now. I almost pulled them the other day because it was making me mad, but um, at five hundred North Franklin, that corner entrance. Those signs that are on the city property there, now the mowers aren't trimming around them because the signs are in the way, so the grass is growing up. And they'll, and there's like six of them in a row right there next to that.
That's exactly what's bothering me too. So that's why I wanted to note that, whether.
The one that gets me is right in the corner, right there by the cemetery. Like you're gonna come out here and you're gonna put, and this is just me voicing my own opinion, but you're gonna go ahead and you're gonna put your real estate sign in the cemetery? There's not anything more disrespectful than that, that's my opinion, but. Like you can go be your business somewhere else. I think we should just take all of them.
But I do know that during the fair, they have a sign there because it directs people to go up. Yeah, exactly.
I think that's a conversation.
But maybe we can have something where there is an exception, but the council has to authorize it, but we have to authorize that then, so that.
I agree.
And let's not authorize everything, guys, okay?
No, no, it'll be definitely.
I mean, I don't wanna start, okay, now we're gonna do the cancer society, now we're gonna do the St. Mary's, now we're gonna do Presbyterian church, now we're. That's not what I'm looking at, but, but things like the fair, that where you have people coming into town in large rows. It's good to have.
Our ordinance does allow organizations to put it in. Like for example, a realtor sign, you can't put it like. If you're not selling your house, you can't really put a sign here pointing up the street. That's not allowed. It does allow organizations, such as like the Red Cross or whatever, to put it in the private.
Right, right, with the property owners. Okay, is that, are you wearing?
Should we, should we also put signs on poles too? Cause I know that's an issue.
No, that one's easier. We don't own the poles. But it's still on the, it's in, in the right of way, so yeah, you just pull them off.
So, that'd be part of this.
You know, and I, I look at certain things like, like the final market, farmer market. Saturday morning, so they go out in the morning before and set it out and they take it down as soon as the farmer market's over.
No. So you got the same thing?
Yeah, no.
It's a slow, it's slippery.
And as soon as one person sees them doing it, then it's all a dick, so.
How do you get them to stop them?
You gotta start pulling them, yeah. Be realistic, uh, the enforcement i- is a challenge because we have other things that we need to do too.
Right.
A lot of people who, I mean, and maybe I'm wrong, but it used to be they had the garage sales, they would advertise in the paper, they would put all this. Nobody reads the paper hardly anymore, which is unfortunate. And then, um, mostly everybody puts their stuff on social media somehow, so they get, figure out where it's supposed to be. Or they're even selling their stuff on social media, Marketplace and that stuff.
That's a lot easier than sitting in a warm garage and waiting for.
Exactly, exactly, so if the world is changing.
So what we will do is organize this conversation, so staff can reaffirm what's, who's that. It's an agenda item, so that way I can put it on against a day, as the direction from the council, uh, we will start.
We post it on social media, we post it on our.
Get the information.
Website. Use every, like send every avenue.
Yeah, I would definitely put it on water bills.
And then, what do we have? I mean, so we can get it in, get it voted on if it passes, I mean.
We, we don't have to vote on it.
Oh, we don't?
No, because it's already in the ordinance, so just reaffirming what the ordinance says.
Direct staff to do it. To enforce it.
Can that be put on the water bill in bold print? I think a lot of people don't.
We're limited on that, but there might be a way we could do, like I know we can do double sided, you know, if they're folded in there or. There might be some options.
We can check into it.
But they have to be done by hand, but right.
No, we can plan this.
Well, we thought about the signs in the right of way.
Just go get all the city, uh, city trucks and the magnum on the, on the tailgate on the backside, or putting signs in the easement is illegal.
And then deputize everybody that.
Okay, all right, yeah, we have direction.
Okay, we'll move on. Stormwater management and flood plan control, flood blame control, excuse me.
Yeah, uh, this is a conversation, Chad, you wanna help out on this? So, we're, Chad's out working and trying to find ways to help reduce flooding in town. He's talking to property owners about areas where we do wetland mitigation management, so flood control, water. For all the issues, uh, and then we turn around and prove developments going on in the flood plain. So it's kind of a conflict of what our interest are. You know, we want development in town, where's the appropriate place that's forced to have development? And then we turn around and, yeah, as we're looking at. Are flooding issues a concern? We're concerned about different properties flooding out and trying to protect them. Uh, are we? In conflict with what we're trying to accomplish? Chad, you want to step up and talk about it? You brought up the subs.
Yeah.
It's all your fault.
So, as we talked earlier, when we were experiencing our flooding issues, um, it kind of becomes a hot topic. Um, with people in the, in, in the community and then when you start talking to other people. And what we constantly do is say, okay, let's go outside the city limits and figure out how we're gonna stop this. Okay, well, we're asking the agriculture community, a lot of instances, to give up their livelihood. That's how they make a living, um, to fix our problem. And, and sometimes it really, it makes it hard when we approve developments around our town that are in floodplains. We know floods, historically, we know where the water goes. And then we allow people to fill that in and build a building. Um, is there better places that we could go with it? Now, granted, the cheaper places to buy and develop are generally places that are in floodplains. Um, and the easy answer is, well, there's something better than that, we'll build it up. We're just worshiping our other places, or creating more properties. So, I'm just bringing this forward to you guys because we, we have great. The agriculture community is great, they do wanna see things helped out and they, they do wanna participate in anything they can do. But at the end of the day, you know, when we say we wanna take their land and make a thing and say, we're gonna hold water here for the betterment. Manchester, well, well then we either gotta come in on the, on the financial side that we're willing to pay for the land. And it's not gonna be, you know, cheap to buy this land because these people have been farming this land for a long time. Very highly productive pieces of land. Or we need to take a good look at ourselves inside of our city limits and say, no, that's just not a good idea to put a bill in there. It, it, it's a tough, it's tough because, you know, people come in here, they make great pitches and they say this is. Great for the community, but we need to really start to have a better look at where we're, where we're putting things. Um, cause I know there's some things coming down the line, you know, we just had flood issues out in the west end of town. Also, we need to really think about what we say yes and no to when, when we allow these things to happen. Those are gonna be hard conversations. Um, you know, no one, no one wants to have to say no or something, when something cool or news is gonna come to the community. But sometimes we gotta look at the, the twenty year effect, not the, not the two year effect. So, I just wanted to come and, and say that to you guys because. When I'm speaking to the, the people outside of the community and inside the community, we kind of give ourselves a black eye. So, something to think about, we started approving different plans that, that come, come our way.
So are there areas in town that you are just saying that we should not, I mean, do you have specific areas that you want us to know about? That we shouldn't be developing in?
Well, I mean.
Well, what I was gonna say is, I'm not sure exactly how this permeates into state law. But when I was in Illinois, if you were gonna do developments on a flood plain, you had to provide what's called compensatory storage. So if you were going to do work in a flood plain, you had to provide compensatory storage and redo the grading. Probably an equivalency of the amount of volume that was there before you got there. And that could be something that the city in Manchester could look at adopting as it relates to the flood plain though. With Wests out there specifically, we are providing compensatory storage and we're talking about that, or those partners, probably likely more they can be done. You could get his whole property there.
Well, I wasn't trying to point out right for taking.
But in general, but there, there are things I think you could maybe look at doing to your cit- the city ordinances. That would help us.
Is our stormwater management ordinance not? It just slows the water runoff from.
Correct.
The pre-development.
It doesn't talk about build within the flood plain per se as far as.
Yeah, and it's so, because DNR allows us to place build in the flood plain.
Correct.
Not flood plain. And, and so again, to Chad's point, you know, we're looking at farmland, at grocery, because it's allegedly cheaper. Than what commercial or vessel property is. And so that's the challenge we run into is where do we have developments going and what's available to them? Because the other issue we've run into is we've been landlocked where we weren't able to find someone that was willing to sell. In order for a development to occur, okay, well then you have to do with what you have available to you. Um, so this is, you know, great to go back and forth on. Where, where do you value, how do you judge it and make that determination? You know, the stormwater organs, we, management organs, we adopted twenty five years ago, whatever it was. That was a very difficult person to sit there and implement and say, hey, you're gonna develop this lot. You have to slow the water running off of there to five year pre-development rate, a hundred year event. That costs quite a bit of money for that development. Uh, and so where is that money being spent? And we did allow for an alternative plan where they could put money into a regional basin. Which is what we did with the school, when the school did their addition onto their building, which was in the flood plain. And so we did that regional basis, basin north of Beckman Sports Complex. It wasn't directly on the site that they were at, but it was alternative upstream from them. So like Jason said, or Chad and Jason, I guess, it's finding that balance between the two.
Maybe there's some places where we really should build no matter what demands.
Matter of what? I, I mean, I don't disagree at all because I, the school was built in swamp land. I mean, we all know that. And, and, and we're kind of stuck with the developments that are, yeah, but the, the developments, yeah.
Our baseball complex, you brought up a lot. I mean, that was a swamp, West Marsh area.
It was, collect stuff that was coming off the farm like at one time, I mean, but um, how do we undo what's already been done?
Correct, and, and that's why I'm bringing this up, is that we don't lose focus on, okay, we wanna get new shiny stuff. And we're gonna just keep filling things in and, and squeezing things down and, and, um, you know. Won't pencil engineers in the room, but we can engineer everything we want, but mother nature's gonna.
Absolutely, yeah.
So. Yeah, and water is very powerful and, and we've all seen it in our own town. And it happens a lot, so it's just something I wanted to bring back up because, you know. We, we really gotta stop kind of stubbing our toes sometimes. So, just take a bigger, better look at things that are coming down the pipe and, and really consider if it's a good idea or not.
So that's a great conversation as part of our comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
So identifying areas where we're going to restrict or inhibit development. Identify areas where it's positive for us to look at for stormwater management, for flood control, for water quality issues. Because there has to be balance. I understand we're looking at lands to reduce the flooding. But we also have to look at ways to reduce the nitrates and phosphorus we're getting in town from the runoff. And, you know, I'm gonna say something that's very unpopular, but those chemicals are coming out from someplace. And they're, they're being generated in town from some properties, they're putting too much down in their lines. But there's large commercial areas outside the city limits. And so we need to work together in order for us to.
I think comprehensive plan is a good place to start looking, but maybe we need to look to add. The possibility of changing the ordinance in some way, but thank you, Chad, for bringing this up because I think it's something that we. I at least don't think enough about and I should think more, so I appreciate the fact that you.
And Rob, Chad, we've talked about it too, it's so easy to get wrapped up in that, hey, this is gonna be great, we're getting this nice and safe. We need to stand back and take a good look at what's affecting that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie to you, you're the last department I think about most times when I go to development. You're like super quiet and you don't really hear.
You're like super quiet and you don't really care.
Yeah, I agree too.
Is it true that, and I, I've always heard this, but I, I'm directionally challenged, I'm gonna tell you right now, but are we really, are Manchester's kind of like a, a hole for the goal for how we are? So, no matter what we get, something's gonna come down on top of it.
Every direction from our four corners.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I thought, yeah. So, that's the other thing that's against us, yeah.
I'm in River Town.
I'm in River Town.
Anytime you go to River Town, our coast is the river.
This would be a good thing for somebody to come in and talk to us about some possibilities of what is to change the ordinance as well. Because we need to be educated, not just write some ordinance, we need to be educated.
I think like Jason said too, like there's a lot of communities that have their survey going. Illinois was a really big, like he said.
Because they need to explain it to us.
Yep, they just have, are they?
Well, it helps our developers then to also know what's gonna work for us as well, before they bring it to us.
Thanks, Chad.
Does graphics in?
Amy's the nicest guy around.
Um, next. Lost my page. Engineering update, is there anything else you wanna tell us? How about you, Jason?
There's really nothing, other than, um, just for next week one, I'll check plans, I'll put the DOT on the trail plan. But beyond that, no, nothing else this evening.
All right, um, Jason.
Oh.
Other Jason, sorry.
Um, big things, I guess, we got, um, we're still patching up on Hansel Street. Um, gonna start getting into some sewer work here again pretty quick, uh, clean lift stations and some odds and ends stuff there. But the flowers will come down September twenty-second. So, that's, that's the case, people started asking, that's the date on those. And then we finalize today, we'll start, we pick up on October thirteenth. So, Laura will be putting out a bulletin on that, so.
They're all turning.
Yeah, we're hoping that we, we hit it right here, so we'll see. That's the best stuff I guess we got going on. Still working with the DOT and getting permitting for our Franklin Street batch, but that'll, that'll come at some point here.
Have you had anybody else say anything about the, um, one of the turning lanes, the arrow that lets you up over here? And it's off a little bit, because cars, I mean, it would like come on and then it'd like go off. And I mean, you weren't even getting through when it was going off. I don't know.
Left turn.
Yeah.
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 That's been like that for a long time, and I think sometimes it re-shows it. But it's, it is fairly quick, the left turn arrow.
Yeah, northbound, yeah, that's the one, all right, yeah. Have somebody mentioned that to me? Anyway.
And then I just got a call that, uh, Eighth Street was acting up today too. And a lot of times this time of year, the sunlight messes with the camera. And so, we had it almost every year at this time, where the sun gets lower and then it gives it a reflection. But that's, it's nothing to do with Main Street.
Um, Ben, you wanna?
Sure. Uh, the only thing I'll add is, um, the agenda for Monday, um, I'll have one new officer, James across your desk. Um, the other thing is, kind of thinking back on what Chad said, we kinda have to start looking for the future, as far as law enforcement goes. Um, we are, we are very fortunate to have the applicants that we have right now. Uh, we have another one that we're gonna evaluate and hopefully get it back to the full staff. After that, I will tell you that every agency around us, near us, are hiring and they're doing a lot. Um, just across the highway, Independence, they're offering five thousand dollar signup, they're certified, and they have zero applicant.
Wow.
So, you know, I'm looking at, again, the future, I don't want people leave, but it can happen. And, you know, we, we have to start looking at what, what, what can we do to keep people here? Uh, and when we have those openings, what makes us better than everybody else? Um, we've had a lot of talks the last year about changing the culture, which takes time, right? We're working on that, but it's those little additives that we need to start focusing on moving forward. Because there are less people countrywide, not just Iowa, that don't wanna do this job anymore. We have a younger force coming in, which is great, but what happens when retirements start coming up? You know, what happens when the core group of admin that we have now, where we were, you know, a year ago? Well, we're gonna start looking towards retirements, people leaving, moving on, things of that nature. We're gonna have a big batch of very young officers, right? And there's not gonna be a lot of people to pick up that slack. Um, so again, it's something that we, we really need to look at the future. We need to look at, you know, I, I don't know if it's always just pay, but there, there's gotta be something we can do, because every agency is, is scrapping right now, um, trying to get people in. So, just something to think about. I know that this conversation prior to my appointment here, um, we may have to revisit that in the future, uh, depending on, I don't know, people. So, um, yeah, hopefully by this, the end of this month, we'll be back with the full staff. Um, Officer Bartowski, he is in the academy, so he'll be gone until December. Um, he'll be there Monday through Friday.
So, you, you'll have one to be sworn in on Monday night? Okay, so I won't be here, so who will that be?
Right here, Ken.
Okay, yeah, I'll get the stuff.
And I'll send the entire council a little bio on it. Appreciate it. You guys will know, we also know the bio, like I have, and all the updates before they come up, so you can take a little bit, but. Anything else for me?
Thanks, Ben. Uh, Randy, you have a minute?
I'll do the two.
Um, Paige's been really quiet lately, which is really good. Yeah, I know, I know, that's, that's, that's the, that's the jinx right there. The ISO report, hopefully we'll hear back from that soon. I did hear from the guy, and he said we should have a night early month, so I checked my email today, I didn't see it, so hopefully very soon. Uh, parking lot, they did do a one call for that, I see some flags out there, but the contractor hasn't said anything to me about when he's starting yet, so. Hopefully that starts pretty quick. Fire convention is this weekend in Boone, is this weekend Boone. Yep, it'll be here next year this time. So, that'll be fun. So, Ed's gonna, Ed's gonna look at for, um, the LoSAP stuff, he's gonna try and get some details, people that are there. Link of service. We're still not sure if that's, it sounds great, we're still not sure if that's actually a, really, when you start digging into it, if it's really all that. But it's cracked up the. So, and other than that, we still haven't heard anything back from FEMA on the FG grant, so I'm just assuming we probably won't hear anything from them. Whether we've been approved or lost, I, we just haven't heard anything.
What's that grant for again?
They put, this grant they applied for was for, uh, New Year.
Do we have a login for that, that we could check the status?
Did the grant funding get cut with everything else?
Mike's had it, Mike Grimes.
Cause I don't know where the emails go on that one.
I used to see some FEMA GO stuff. Through the, through our email, and Mike says he checks it weekly.
Okay, okay.
And hasn't.
It's not one of the things that they just decided not fund, is it?
Uh, it's entirely possible. Other than that, that's all I got.
So, I, um, thanks to Erin, I was able to get my, my annual report done. I just put some things on, I'm only gonna talk about a few of them, I know you guys can read, um, this yourself. But I just wanted to talk about some of the important things that happened last year, um, last fiscal year. So, um, we received a grant, a thirty-five hundred dollar grant from the foundation of future Delaware County. Um, we are starting to purchase the large print books, we actually got an order in today. Um, good, we're trying to get good deals, um, and, you know, a book can cost anywhere between thirty-five and fifty dollars for those large prints. But if you can get a good deal, like we just got thirty-five percent off, or something's more, reshipping, things like that, um, we can get a lot more for our, for our dollar. Um, just the teen advisory board planned one teen breakout room last year, a dinosaur themed program for children kindergarten through third grade, and then also a multi-generational Taylor Swift program, which had people from three years old to senior citizens. Um, that was pretty fun. Um, and then we also added two new collections to our catalog this year. Um, one was, we had twelve memory care kits that we added to support patrons with dementia and their families, as well as, um, we had a, a great donation for bilingual books in Spanish to support our local Spanish-speaking population as well. Um, literacy cut, cut off there, sorry, to encourage early literacy is what it should say at the very end of that one. Big thing with new library cards, we've had four hundred and sixes last year, so that was, that was pretty commensurate with the years before that. Um, big thing with circulation, interlibrary loan, we sent out two hundred and forty-one of our books. Um, and then Libby, Hoopla, and now Canopy, that number just keeps going up, because it's digital, and people are reading and watching things on there. Hoopla, we no longer have, um, but Canopy took its place for the digital, um, streaming, video streaming. Um, and then the one thing I added this year, that I, every time you get, you check something out on your receipt, you get a thing that says how much you saved, and it's basically, it takes what we paid for the book and puts it on there. And so, the total amount saved, just according to our Apollo program, is eight hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-five, or sorry, eight hundred eighty-seven, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. So, that was just in that one fiscal year, we saved patrons that much, just on that. Um, so then other things, we check every month, how many people come in, we have a door counter. Um, so four, forty-six thousand, one visits to the library. Um, we sent out, uh, or no, we received, we received a whole lot more books than we sent out. We received thirteen, oh, almost fourteen hundred books from other libraries, um, for people to use. We had five hundred and sixty-two programs with nine thousand five hundred and fourteen people participating. Um, we have huge internet usage between just our free wifi that we have in there, and then our wifi computers as well. And then just down the bottom, funding and revenue, a lot of us, you understand, library fees are from copying and faxing. So, those are the two things, the library fees, that brings that in. Lost and damaged books, we receive those if, um, they're irreparable or they're just not found. Um, we charge the patrons, that's the only charges we have for them. Um, we don't have late fees or anything like that, and that pays for replacements for those either same book or a book like that typically. Um, Enrich Iowa funding, estate funding, um, is based on accreditation, I'm a tier-three accredited, and that's the highest you can be. So, I get money for that, I also get money through ILL reimbursement and open access reimbursement. So, anybody in the state can, um, use our services and our lot, and our books. But if they do that, then we get a reimbursement for every book that's checked out from them. And the last thing is just sales of withdrawn materials, when we withdraw our materials, which we have to do every year, a three percent roughly, and average over three years, three percent of our, our books have to be weeded out, because that gives people, that gives us the opportunity to get new things in there. A lot, I mean, especially nonfiction, it's really important for nonfiction. There's some things in there that only really are accurate for like three years. Um, and so, when we, then we sell those for twenty-five cents a piece, and that's what we made on, on that. And that money goes into our gift and trust, where then we can replace books, that kind of thing for that, so. And there's just some other information you guys can look at, but I just wanted to share, as I do try to do every year, um, share the information of important things that have happened.
Allison, I just wanted to point out something that kinda stepped up to me, was that five hundred and sixty-two programs offered, nine thousand five hundred and fourteen people attending.
I mean, it's not different people probably, but it is, you know, like each thing, yeah.
One thing that really steps up to me is, I mean, our census was five thousand one hundred and six. So, I mean, and yeah, you might have some repeat people coming, but that's, that's amazing.
So, getting Canopy, for instance, we hadn't, I had to tell them how many cards we have, and it was like forty-three hundred cards. So, I mean, I know they're not all people in town, it's people outside town. It's like, it's my mother who lives in Dubuque, who can't always get her hands on the books in Dubuque, at their library, where she'll check out a book once in a great while here, because we have it, um, things like that. Um, all of our digital services are only for Manchester and Del, rural Delaware County and our contracting cities. Um, but like somebody like Delhi can't use our digital services, cause they can use their own. And so, it all has to do with kind of funding and tax money and things like that. But, so it really is, it's, it's kind of a complicated process that some people don't understand quite, but that is, it's true. We always see, I mean, forty-six thousand people walking into that building. So, and that's probably on the lower end, because we have little kids walking in that are underneath that door counter, and, you know, things like that. So, yeah, it's just something to, to think about, but, yeah.
I know, you're the one, yeah.
Yeah, RMC's, Barn of Bodation and, and the walls can never just enough there. A one rail's coming along the shops, already just need to pile up this brick wall, and then the opposite, we can do that wall. I mean, Exo Trail, that small addition on, they also got a permit for a larger addition that come through here. Bowling alley, maybe a bit faster, it's drawn from the back part. The roof is, I'm not gonna even see the blades like that.
I've seen some pictures, they have. Oh, catching the water and a whole hill in the deal, that's posted, that was one of the repairs from.
The roof is actually collapsing in the back of that, and a lot of action is happening, all the walls, got the walls moving in that. My dog has been three houses and two condo, or two, two in that condo. It's good, because before August, we had three houses total, so. At the Grisby Golf Course, where the river is washing the bank. We're looking at that, I mean, we have some concrete, I talked to the DNR. We can dump some of the concrete we're having, turn out the speeds and stuff, and that helps secure that, but it can't be permanent, so we're gonna have to actually put some money to finish it, and when we do that, that's something you guys have to look into, whether you want that or not.
How do you finish it, after you, what, what do you mean?
Oh, well, it's gotta have a two-on slope and.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Some, some rock to put on that, or, or we can't just throw it in a concrete jump. Basically, that's what they're saying, but they did say we have a lot of the, that is, dollars, washing, or. What he meant by long-term, I kind of asked him, you know, it's fucking. Five years, ten years, one small.
I think the biggest thing of the one direction, do we wanna dump the concrete in there? Or, or do we wanna just sit tight until we start having some funds to be able to do that? And, cause otherwise, we could be in the, in the spot of where we have to go down there and dig this back out.
I think we, we want something in writing for the DNR, because we don't wanna turn into the airport where we got in trouble for. Putting all that fill up there at that rate.
Like I said, I don't know what he meant by that, and the concrete we got, just talking to him, Jason Con about that from the DNR tomorrow. I mean, it sounds like we, we could use that, and we wouldn't have to dig it back up when we slope it down there. So, it's not like it's a temporary, dig it back down, but I'll, I'll find out what he means by long-term.
Don't want some sort of plan of action, I'll address that in the long term.
I'd like it in writing, probably.
Yeah, the, the challenge here is, we've probably lost eight to ten feet of bank there this year.
This year, oh.
That's a lot.
Um, and so, the, the challenge is, it's probably twelve to fourteen foot from the top of the bank to the water's table. Um, so that's a lot of fill, a lot of concrete. Um, we get back to where we're at, and then we have to slope it, so we're gonna lose a little bit more of our top. The angle down there to keep it from being so, so precarious the way it is.
Actually, talking to him, we can take it back to the original, so we wouldn't have to lose any of the dump.
A lot of concrete might be needed there.
Fill concrete, yeah.
Or can't load all of the concrete.
Well, right, yeah.
Because it's, it's probably a hundred and a hundred and fifty foot of length of that bank that we have to armorize. So I think what we'd like to do is, we'll come back to the council in our meeting in October, meet at all, with some concepts. Now, we'll have Chad, we'll go draw. But yeah, this is. This is something we need in our organization. The challenge is, is how much money do we spend to armorize this versus what's the value, what we have there, then. What's the worst case that happens if we do end up losing this? Because a river is gonna change direction.
How much is it taking a lot of the golf holes, mini-bottles away? I'm trying to say what it is.
That's not really a real big concern.
Okay.
It, it took a little bit of the, the nature trail that we had back there, but we, we can reroute it. So it's not really a concern other than the fact that we're just losing.
Twelve feet in, four months.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot.
Twenty feet a year.
How much, did we lose that much last year, too?
I, we didn't have high water.
I didn't have high water last year.
So we, we had, we had, it was kind of actually angled a little bit where you lost a little bit. Now it's straight down because it just toes the feet on it.
So it's undermining it and drawing it down.
Gotcha.
Injuries and, you know, play that, it's, I mean, it's not really necessarily affecting us a whole lot, but.
Yeah.
It's not a good thing either.
Right, right. Okey-dokey, anything else? Any idea when the bowling alley will reopen, when they're shooting, oh, is that what they said in the paper?
That what?
That, they're shooting. They had an article on PMCH, I think.
So he's got twenty-eight more days. It's quite a bit of work to do in twenty-eight days.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's set backwards, on the outside it'll probably be done by then, then he wins.
He's doing a lot of really fun stuff tonight.
Yeah, uh. Inside.
Let's hope he has good weather so he can.
Yeah, I, I kind of hope he keeps a, a crew helping at the inside too, because he's first. Then, you know, obviously you gotta wait for electrician to provide. So I don't see that.
Yeah, I wouldn't count it out, he seemed to figure out how to make stuff.
Just will see that.
I give him, give him quite a bit of credit for it.
Nothing else, thanks. Uh, Chad, did you have anything else tonight?
Um, not really, no, um, you'll see us out flushing hydrants. Our belt turning trucks out for maintenance right now, but when we get that back, we will start flushing hydrants, so you'll see us out doing that. Um, and I'll give, or we do start, put it on social media. Really doesn't affect that many people, there's some areas in town that may see a little rusty water, so if they ask you, we're all flushing. Um, that they can feel free to call us, though, cause if, if they're having an issue, we can go flush some more. Today was disconnect day, so we had that funness today. Other than that, it's, I mean, in the business of.
Any questions for Chad?
All the, uh, all the hydrants got painted this year, right?
Not all, no. How many do we have? Uh, four hundred and some. We have like nine hundred and some bottles out here, two cents. Just getting harder and harder to get them all done in a year. Yeah, we got a big chunk of them done in the middle of town because we're trying to prepare for the. Fire convention coming, we want those looking nice, cause they're gonna be at the fairgrounds in the downtown area, and those done.
I'm pretty excited for the fire convention, I'll walk around to you guys, but.
That's a blast. Yeah, you guys are gonna enjoy it.
Any other questions for Chad? Okay, thanks, Chad. Hey Doug, did you have anything else?
I do, um, I'm trying to make quick. Uh, it's just a real quick recap, Hero Hustle, uh, we had two hundred and six participants, good weather, uh, went off without a hitch. Youth volleyball clinic starts up this Sunday, runs on Sundays in September, we currently have fifty-one registered, we'll probably get another twenty or so for that. Like football teams have started practicing, there's fourteen teams between first and second, third and fourth, with a hundred and ten kids registered right now. And the pool is closed, shut down, uh, beginning to drain today. We kind of peeked through, uh, Perry pulled some, uh, some manholes and. He believes that there's still, we're losing some water still, most likely underneath the pool, it's not the new mud valve for sure. Um, it doesn't appear to be the main drain, so we're gonna look in the surge pit, we're gonna look at the, the joints again. Maybe look in the gutters and see if there's possibly someplace that got missed with the caulking. It's not the worst problem ever, but it's caused, it causes us to use more chemicals, more heat, more water. And it's kind of a pain in the butt, and if it gets worse, it will be a problem, but right now, we've been dealing with it for the last three, four years, so it's, it's obviously. Um, something we can operate through, but we'd like to get it figured out, um, and identify and fix it if possible. And then, um, the flooring, so pool flooring in the locker rooms and hallways leading around. It's about ten years old, I believe, it's epoxy flake flooring, it's coming up. Um, I think I've given you guys a little bit of history, we've been in it ourselves a couple of times. We've got a company, a couple of companies come in over the years, this one is starting to chip up, um, pretty good, there's some pretty good spots. Basically all throughout the area. Um, one, it looks bad, and two, it's slippery. So I've got three companies to get quotes, I do have the quotes, I'll get those two here over the next week or two and on the next meetings. Uh, one of the quotes came back at, um. Fifty-five thousand dollars for the hallways alone, the other company was sixteen thousand eight hundred for the, for the hallways and the restrooms. And then I had a third company that, that met on site, gave three quotes, so kind of a good, better, best, um, options. And that, right, those range between about eight to ten thousand, ten to twelve thousand or sixteen thousand, so I think it's a little bit more doable. Um, they understood the concept that we have an aging facility, we don't need to throw a whole ton of money in, but we need to make it look nice. And make sure that it's slip resistant, so the biggest thing is the safety aspect, it's wet, we got kids in bare feet. As many times as our, our staff yells at them to not run, they do turn corners and fall. And so, um, I'm gonna come up, I got a couple ideas, I think, that, I, I think somewhere either the cheapest or the middle one would be acceptable. Um, we don't need to have it be deluxe, uh, as much as that would be great, um, just wanna make sure that, one, it lasts the length of the, the rest of the lifespan of the pool. And two, it's safe, so I wanna make it look good and safe, so I'll have info and I'll, I'll put some pictures of. Where our, our bad spots are, which are basically about everywhere throughout the area, so they would come in, grind it all down, get all the old epoxy off. Diamond grinding the floor or shot blasted to rough it up so that the epoxy sticks a little bit better, or the, the coating, whichever route we go. So I just wanted to give you that, I got the quotes in last, uh, would have been Friday, so it was a little late, but, um, it'll be coming up, like.
How much longer do we have for life expectancy in the pool?
That's a really good question. Um, probably about the same thing as what Jason said about the, the culverts is. And I'd like to think we could get a solid ten, maybe fifteen, maybe five, I mean, it's, it all depends, you know, with meets and things like that. Who knows? For the most part, it's in still really good shape for being twenty-seven years old, I think is what it is. But there's equipment that is getting old, uh, we've replaced quite a few things, there's still pumps that are original. No, there's, the, the filters are still ori- original, the heater's coming on down the line again, so there's a few things that. Eventually we will have to weigh, is it worth putting thirty-five thousand dollars in for a heater? Or seventy thousand dollars for new, um, filters, or do we just kind of run it down and plan for the next, the next facility? I can't give you an answer, most pools say that it's about a thirty to forty year lifespan, we're at about twenty-seven. I feel like ours is in better shape than most twenty-seven year old pools, but we're starting to show age. So, something to think of, at least in the next decade, get real serious about it, but. In the meantime, the ten thousand dollar floor is a lot cheaper than a five million dollar pool, that sort of thing, so, um. You know, and we can Band-Aid a lot of the things, but when you start looking at some of the additional things. And specifically with the, the piping and the, and the actual pool basin, as long as that holds up, we're sitting pretty good, but, you know. Slides, they need to be, they need to be re-cocked and, and pumps need to be replaced and that sort of stuff, so. We're nothing's, nothing's, um, absolutely awful right now, but it's getting there.
Erin, do you have anything to say?
Not to be Debbie Downer, but we are heading in towards, well, we're in September now, heading towards October and over December. Budget time coming up, um, legislative sessions, we may be starting up again. We have, there's been a lot of expenditures discussed tonight, um, and we're just gonna have to be really mindful of the budget that we have. We're not seeing huge jumps in local option like we had in the past, franchise fees are remaining level, maybe not down a little bit since that, um. Black Hills extra fee came off, um, hotel motel tax is, you know, we're not seeing huge jumps in that, we've got a hotel shut down. Um, and we don't know what the state's gonna do with property taxes this year, so. Um, you know, obviously I wanna fund everything we can, but we are maybe gonna be in a situation where we're gonna have to make some decisions this year. So I just want that to be in the back of everyone's mind.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. You wanna be Debbie Upper?
Uh, the airport committee did have a meeting, they would like to do a joint session with the city council, airport committee. Um, question is, would you like to do that on the fifth Monday of September? Or would you like to meet with them before we have a pre-dinner home meeting at four o'clock on October, um, sixth?
So, separate night or two and one night type scenario?
Yeah, basically.
It's a fifth Monday?
Yeah, it'd be the fifth Monday, September twenty-ninth, so we wouldn't have, normally have anything scheduled that night either.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah, I, would that work for?
I prefer to split them off personally.
Okay, I will talk to the airport, we make sure that works and we'll get back to you on that for confirmation then.
Works for you, Linda?
I have a good schedule, but it's probably work, I'm very flexible.
I suggested the fifth Monday, so.
Yeah.
So what, what we'll suggest that, we'll bring it back on Monday night and burn everything. Or just kind of save Monday.
Oh, I, I got Monday, I know, specifically to protect, come to council meetings, and then you make them on Tuesdays, so.
People, the public have asked me, how, when is the predicted date McDonald's is going to open?
We haven't got some planning information yet, uh, planning information will be on September eleventh to review the site plan. Uh, at that point, it may or may not need to come before city council, which would be the September twenty-second. They're asking the city council for approval, I gotta review the orders, what, what's required. Uh, and then they have the building permit, I can't tell you when they.
So are you confirming McDonald's coming tonight?
They have a site plan, there, there's no, nothing's confirmed until I. Big Mac, but yeah. Uh, right now, the process is moving that way.
So if, if the citizens of Manchester go ahead and watch council meetings and become informed, then they'll know what's going on there then.
Well, a site plan has been submitted.
Well, that's potentially going.
It's potential.
Yeah.
Well, some people are very happy to hear that. I know, like, I prefer Congress, but, or friends, that's all I have, cause you're wondering.
Yes, I have two things. First thing is, is I've been getting lots of, uh, phone calls and stuff about grass being blown out under the roads. Um, so just wanted to kind of bring that up, and then, uh, the other thing is, is. My bigger brother's birthday is today, so I just wanna wish him a happy birthday.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, we have also a meeting, our childcare people are going to be meeting with our. On September thirtieth, which is a Tuesday night, and that's at five o'clock. Final clock at, um, thirtieth. Yeah, so, I mean, we're gonna be meeting with, um, we invited some other childcare facility people to come too, but. Um, you're more than welcome to join us if you'd like to hear what's going on and.
Where's that?
It's gonna be here.
Is it gonna be here?
Oh, I don't know, did we, I thought it was gonna be here.
I, I didn't listen to the tape to see what was confirmed for.
Well, if we're inviting the rest of the, um, we might want it at a different place, I checked with Donna maybe. Cause she, and, cause, um, was it Vicky and then Rudy? Vicky recommended that, and then Rudy said yes. And I think we were all in agreement to have the other people come as well, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll identify location.
I know two of them are coming for sure, I don't know if she's heard, and Senator's in the bottom.
Um, I'm just gonna say this, though, about that meeting, it's specifically for.
Childcare, yes.
So, don't come with the concept that you're gonna talk about a whole lot of other things, because I don't think we're gonna try to do anything about childcare. We're, we're trying to have a scary conversation regarding city government.
Okay. All right, other than that, I do not have anything else, so I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight, and do we need a motion to adjourn or anything? A motion from Wendy, a second from Mary, and we are adjourned.